I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Moving on to item number five, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendation, appendix A, Dr. Markley.
Hello, we only, at this time, we have one assistant principal recommendation for a vacancy that's currently at Holly Shelter. It is my pleasure to recommend Alicia Chapman, who serves as a teacher at Bellamy. She recently completed her administrative internship at Bellamy and Murray. The contract will be effective until June 30th, 2021. Ms. Chapman has a bachelor's degree in history from the University of North Carolina at Asheville, a master's in elementary education from the University of Southern California, and her administrative add-on license from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
And I believe Ms. Chapman is here tonight. What do you have with you?
I have Monta Fekie, and Lynn, and I'm a state worker in Illinois.
Item number six, Head Start. Item A, Head Start liaison report, Mr. Billier.
Thank you very much. Before I get to our monthly numbers, I just wanted to share some things with you, some of the work that Head Start is doing. This past week at Johnson's Fall Festival, on October 24th, we had a total of 490 adults and children attend. It was a fantastic event, well-organized and extremely well-attended. We always want to get families involved, and the Fall Festival was a great opportunity for us to do that. Johnson Pre-K has received all student health assessments, meeting the required deadline. We have given 140 dental exams. Forty families have signed up for the Health Department Mobile Dental Unit, which will arrive at Johnson Pre-K on November the 5th today. Two-hundred-and-fifty-one students seen by Prevent Blindness for a vision exam this year. One-hundred-and-twenty-eight students had a hearing exam at Johnson Pre-K. Teachers, in collaboration with Smart Start, started raising a reader program for this year and have been sending red bags home with books for students. And our next policy council meeting will be this Thursday at 5:00 PM in the Dale K. Spencer Building. So as you can see, it's been pretty busy, and we appreciate Ms. Miles for all the work she continues to do on behalf of our three- and four-year-olds. For our enrollment numbers, we are funded at 260 students, 113 three-year-olds, and Appendix C. Thank you. The money. Again, I always remind everybody that this looks strange. You'll see our numbers for salaries, for everything, right around 30 percent. Again, our fiscal year starts differently. We are a month in the rear, and so we are perfectly in line to meet our budget items. Are there any questions for myself or for Ms. Miles? May I have anything to add? Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Item number, why on the right, item number? Item number seven. It's out of order on here. Okay. Item number seven, information. Item A, security and risk assessment, district-wide report. Appendix D, Mr. Anderson.
In preparing for tonight's meeting, I had taken a look back to see where we had been. We actually started this process right out a year ago. It was November 2018 that we started with an RFP. We interviewed several nationally-known companies in safety and securities, especially with educational school systems. And we hired True North Consulting Group. After a series of interviews and site assessments and analysts and evaluations of data and reports, we're going to, the representatives tonight will present the findings and some recommendations. This will be a brief overview of their report, but I think it's important to note that this will be kind of a roadmap for the school system in going forward. You're going to see some priorities. They are listed in priority order, they're, it's not an implementation plan, so there's still some work for us to do as a school system and a school board moving forward. Tonight, Tony Jokowski, COO, was that better?
No.
Good. Ah, gosh. And Michael Rosen, who is the principal consultant with True North that was in charge of the New Hanover County Schools Program. They're here tonight to make a brief presentation for you, and I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, all members and members of the public. It's an honor being here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you. We are, we're pleased to see the effort your district has taken and commitment to security and safety of everyone within your district, and we're just honored to be part of this. This is a short presentation that summarizes the highlight of the extensive study that was conducted by our team. And so I'll just jump right in. First, quickly, who I am. My name is Michael Rosen. I am the executive security consultant with the True North Consulting Group. I've been in the security, law enforcement, counterterrorism arena for close to 20 years of my life. My previous world, I served in Special Operations Unit in the National Defense Forces. I worked for governmental agencies, and I'm now, for the last eight years or so, working with the True North, establishing proactive and effective security programs throughout the United States and beyond. The agenda here is to go a little bit over what we have conducted, some of the initial findings, and objectives of this, of this assessment. The objectives of the assessment that were set forth were ultimately to go beyond the audit and to establish a true guideline for security risk management for the district. What that means is that there's no such thing as 100 percent secure environment. There are always vulnerabilities, there are always risks. The best strategy is to identify the most critical risks and apply effective solutions that can lower those risks. And that's what we're set to do here. The focus here was man-made, primarily man-made threats, and we attempted to approach the security of the district holistically. We touch every single aspect. It touches security from operations, policies, procedure, governance, technology, and more. The way the assessment was conducted and the phases of this project, we started with gathering a significant amount of data through the pre-assessment efforts. Thank you again, District Management Team, for your flexibility and cooperation and hard work on working with us to compiling everything that we needed. We proceeded with the district interviews and site assessments. Each of us, we visited each one of the schools in which our team has spent significant amount of time with the principals, system principals, and other team members from each school. We have done a detailed walkthroughs of each and every school to identify the areas, the commendable elements, as well as areas with opportunities for, for, for change. We have provided a number of different reports, school-specific reports and district-level report, and we're here now at this moment of executive presentation. Our methodology and approach to conducting this assessment, as I mentioned, this is a risk assessment, thus, the strategy was to first identify what are those critical assets that we are set to protect in the entire district and each and every school. We then conducted a threat assessment that touches not only the district, but specifics of each and every school, that provide us some sort of analysis of the likelihood of certain type of threats materializing at your schools. We then identified potential vulnerabilities that existed in operational, technological, and physical domains of security operations. We conducted the risk analysis, both quantitative and qualitative risk analysis, and we provided a list of prioritized recommendations that are based on their ability to ultimately reduce When we think about security, we think about those three domains working together. The domains of physical security measures, the technology that is used by the district, and the human factor. And, you know, we are a little bit different than maybe any other traditional consultants, where we prioritize the human factor, because the most significant threats and risks posed to the district are typically come from the human factor. And so we believe the solution to the most significant human factor risks also come from the, from the human factor. So we prioritize the personal policies, procedures, training, and more over everything else. So here's some of the initial findings. And when it comes to the, the most critical assets that are consistently throughout schools, some schools vary a little bit in the type of assets they have, but we're typically talking about, of course, people inside each and every school. We're here set to protect the students, the staff, the visitors, the occupants of those buildings. This is the most essential asset to all of us here. Buildings and grounds was prioritized as the second most important asset, actual facilities. The data and telecom infrastructure necessary to conduct the services, and other assets such as medications for the students that are stored there, that some students depend on this medication, utilities, student personnel files, and more. From there, we conducted a threat analysis. Now, it's important to know that a threat assessment is nothing more than an intelligence-based guess, because there is no one how dare they can predict exactly what can happen tomorrow and how it's going to happen. If that power existed, we wouldn't be here. But when it comes to this threat assessment we have conducted, we identified three likely motives for carrying potentially malicious or violent acts at your schools. Those motives we categorized as what we call idiosyncratic motive actors, criminally motivated threat actors, as well as ideologically motivated threat actors. Specifically, when it comes to idiosyncratic motive actors, this, unfortunately, this is a broad category that seems to keep expanding in our nation. And we see more and more incidents such as active shooting incidents that we see over news over and over again, are generally carried by this category of people who are inspired to carry such violent acts because of personal grievances, because of mental health problems, because of need for revenge, or need for superficial fame. And the fact is, right, the fact is that they are carrying very lethal attacks, shootings, stabbings, placing explosive devices, and other harmful incidents. And today, in the United States, regardless of where you are, right, but we're faced with the reality that every one week, every week and a half, maximum two weeks, we're faced with another mass violent incident. Why that is the case, we can probably debate all night long, but the fact is that is the case, and so we have to take this threat very seriously. Another important characteristic of this threat, as compared to just about anything else, that we cannot exactly associate with necessarily crime levels or other kind of characteristics of any given area, the fact is, this threat tends to materialize at any time, any place, anywhere around the United States. And that's just a fact. The second criteria here is crime. And, you know, certainly the area, Wilmington and surrounding areas is, you know, you have higher and lower crime zones. What we have done is we conducted a crime cast analysis, meaning we not only analyzed the data, the crime data from the past, we also forecasted the crime in the future based on the trends, based on the social behaviors in those areas, based on the populace and expected, and expected changes in the populace. And when we think about the crime forecasting, you know, we, and look at your area, you know, it's, there are a number of areas with moderate to low crime, or meaning the average national standards, and there are some there above. Specifically, when we take a close look, you know, and take a look at the facilities within the county schools district here, we see the, two of the administrative service buildings, four of the learning centers, two of the high schools, one of the middle schools, and five elementary schools to be placed in relatively higher crime areas. The rest of your facilities are placed in anywhere between relatively low to moderate crime, and that is forecasted for the next several years. When it comes to the ultimate scores, you can see that, this is the scores, the colors here in red signifies the crime forecasting of the facilities that you see in front of you that are likely will continue to be in a higher crime areas over the next several years. Now, crime statistics and crime forecasting is only one element of the overall risk score, which I will share with you here in a little bit, but it's certainly a factor that was considered. And this is the list of others. I don't think I need to bore anyone by going school by school here, that's going to take forever, but the idea is that in our reports provided to the district, we have, we have provided very detailed data associated with each and every facility in your school and their likelihood to encounter crime. The last threat actor that was identified by us was what we call a homegrown violent extremist, typically individuals or groups motivated by ideological ideas, almost always terrorism-related ideas. And while there has been no schools in the United States yet where the attacks carried by homegrown violent extremists, we have seen significant amount of direction and propaganda by foreign terrorist organizations and others directing individuals in the United States to carry attacks in schools because of the pain that it will inflict. And so while this, we consider it a low to medium threat, depends on its likelihood, it's certainly a threat that we also have to think about. And the type of attacks that these individuals carry also range from vehicle ramming, shootings, explosive device placements, and more. It's, you know, it's sad that today we have to think about and consider all those threats, but it's just part of doing business these days. The other criterion of threat assessment was, who are the threat actors? External, in your case, and internal are both considerations. And in fact, when analyzing schools, education institutions, we know that majority of the risks comes here from inside the school, meaning most of the threat actors are typically associated with the school itself. Thus, our recommendations are prioritized to address this, to address this problem as well. And, you know, we, we ultimately don't protect against motives or origins of the threat actors, we protect against specific methods of attack. And we have taken a close look at what are those potential threat elements capable of, and we prioritize a likelihood list of the type of attacks that could potentially happen and the likelihood, level of likelihood for them to occur there. And what you see in front of you is just that level of likelihood and those threats materializing, ranging from shooting, assault, vandalism, burglary, theft, and more, as you can see in front of you. This, this is, this is the, the, the reality. Now, when it comes to the findings and, and risk analysis of identified schools, we have considered all those factors, factors such as assets, value, the threats, and the vulnerabilities at each and every school, and provided both quantitative and quantitative analysis. And overall, we see that out of all facilities, one of the administrative service areas, three of the learning centers, five of the high schools, two of the middle schools, and four of the elementary schools are considered to be a relatively higher risk, according to our analysis. And everything else falls within moderate to relatively low. When you take a look at this graph here, this, the 10 facilities that you see in front of you, those are the facilities that tend to have a little higher risk. This is due to multiple factors. The number of assets and the type of assets they have, the type of threats they might be facing, the location they are located, the number and type of vulnerabilities identified at their sites, and more. And so logically, from the risk management standpoint, prioritizing this school would be the right idea. Then we provide a list of all other schools that fall within medium to low category of identified risk. We also provided a detailed list of recommendations to the district, and as well as a detailed list of recommendations for each and every school to increase the safety and security of each facility. And it's important to, it's important to point out that those recommendations were not prioritized based on, based on their cost or anything else, but simply their ability to reduce risk in your schools. Now, I won't go again, point by point, because that will bore everyone, I just summarize the categories of those recommendations and what are we looking for. The recommendation number one, and kind of the overall, the overall directions of where we're, where we're going, was, is the vision of establishing a centralized security department within the district that can take on the security roles and responsibilities to supplement, supplement the SROs that are deployed to the schools. We have seen, this is a great model of this, of this cooperation between districts and police departments. It's a successful model, it works in many other districts that we work, and that will be very valuable, we believe, for your district in reducing some of the very critical risks that exist out there. Of course, we recommend also enhanced training, deployment, and utilization of law enforcement resources, as well as training of district personnel, enhancing the emergency preparedness program both at the district level and at school-specific level, establishing a centralized security operation center that will be responsible for monitoring access control, video surveillance, radio communication, and provide a central point of information in, in case emergency does strike here in the district. We also suggest to engage community, and certainly, community members are part of the security role. Security is everyone's responsibility, security is a way of life, and it's certainly not, especially the type of risks that schools are facing, this, this cannot be successful if the entire responsibility is put on the district management or the, or the security professionals. It starts with the community. And so we encourage the district, as well as the community, to engage in this topic and be willing to share information, be willing to, to report and step forward if they see any red flags. And our recommendation here is to provide platforms and, and a protocol for, for such communication to take place. We also provided a series of strategic recommendations for physical hardening of the schools that range from perimeter protection to a certain level of hardening in and around the buildings, as well as unifying and properly integrating technological systems that serve the district with the human element in mind at its center. These are the general seven areas of recommendations. There are certainly a lot more specifics provided in our, in our, in our documents to the district. With that, I, I will stop torturing you with my terrible accent and a bad English, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions? All right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With the board's approval, I'd like to move up the superintendent's report, and then we'll go back to the regular order, but I would like to get to the Safer Schools Task Force information. So does anyone have any objection to that?
No.
Okay. All right. So we will move to item eight, and then go back to item seven, number B.
All right. I've got several other things of superintendent report. We're only going to move up item A. It seems logical with this audit that we bring up Jay Corpenning to talk about the Safer Schools Task Force memory and understanding. One of the things you heard in the recommendation was about training, and Jay's going to expand on that. He was with us when we did our first security audit back in '13, as well as our first safety summit after that. So I can't say enough good things about Jay and the work that he has done with us around the issue of safety. So Judge Corpenning, please.
Good evening. It's a real pleasure to come before the New Hanover County Board of Education on such an important matter. I'm Kathy Stute, New Hanover County Assistant County Manager for Human Services, and I also serve as the interim director for the Consolidated Health and Human Services Agency. And we, of course, have Judge Corpenning here, our fifth district court judge, and Kim Heck, our Southern Regional System of Care Coordinator for Trillium. New Hanover County's been partnering with Trillium since 2014 to offer the youth mental health first aid and the adult mental health first aid training for about 1,800 employees as an investment in our staff, as an investment in our customers, and an investment in our community. I'm a psychologist by profession, so mental health and well-being is extremely important to be advanced for everyone, first and foremost, from an educational perspective, because I truly believe prevention and education are the best ways for us to get on the front end to really help our students grow up to be healthy adults. And the county has been advocating and supporting the New Hanover County Schools to allow this critical training to be implemented through various endeavors, from our Safer Schools Task Force recommendations and our local community child protection team recommendations for the past several years. So please allow me to turn this over to our beloved Judge Corpenning to share his thoughts and perspectives this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Beloved makes me feel old. I'm always thrilled to be here with you to talk about our kids. I'm also always thrilled to talk to you about safety. I'm here tonight wearing my hat as chairman of the Community Child Protection Team. It's a group mandated by law to look for gaps in services to children in our community, to evaluate every child fatality, and then to make a report annually to our county commissioners about gaps in services. So, so that's the hat I'll bring tonight, although my judge hat's going to creep in in a minute. Also here as chair of the Safer Schools Task Force, because we have made recommendations to you about making our schools safer. As I listened to the summary of the audit, and I was invited to be here this afternoon at 3:30, and we had some child welfare meetings that I needed to participate in and couldn't be here, but as I, as I listened to the briefing, and I looked at the list of priorities, and I kept seeing mental health down at the bottom. If we don't take care of what's inside the walls, our schools will never be safe. Learned that from Larry Bonney, many of you know Larry. Larry was actively with us on our Safer Schools Task Force in 2013, then in 2018. Larry used to investigate school shootings on behalf of the FBI. We have to take care of the mental health of our students. We have to. As part of that, we've got to talk about suicide. We have to talk about mental health. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among our teenagers now. Second-leading cause of death. National Institute for Health Statistics says that suicide among our young girls 15 to 19 hit a 40-year-high in 2015. During that period of time, suicide rate for those girls, well, from 2007 to 2015, suicide rate for girls doubled. For our young men, for our boys, suicide rate increased by 31% during that period of time. Coastline on, on our public radio station did a series, many of you have listened to Coastline before, very active on, on issues that are out there for us, they did a story after the movie 13 Reasons Why was released. One of the, one of the parts of their report that just staggered me was that 75% of kids who are suicidal never receive any mental health care. So what can we do to move the needle on that? We educate folks who are interacting with those kids to recognize the signs of distress so that it's not 75% anymore, and so that every kid that we intersect with gets the chance to have mental health care. I shared with Ms. Zestep, when we met several weeks ago, a 13-year-old, young lady in my foster care caseload, wanted to talk one day, and she came back with the social worker in the Guardian, and she's one of our ESA kids, so she's riding the bus a lot, and one of the concerns that I always try to address is how you feeling about riding the bus so much? You know, is two hours to school and two hours home too much? She said, no, it works for me. I sleep in the morning, and I smile, and said, sort of wish I had that extra two hours, you know? I said, well, how about on the way home? She said, oh, I do my homework and I, and I read. She said, oh, I do my homework and I, and I read. And I said, really? What are you reading now? And she said, without batting an eye, Thirteen Reasons Why. And I'm feeling very ill-equipped at that moment to have that conversation, right? But I couldn't let it go, so I said, well, how'd that make you feel? 13, 13-years-old, middle-schooler. She said, it makes me feel sad for all my friends at school who talk about suicide. New Hanover County School. 13-years-old, sad for all of her friends at school that are talking about suicide. Last week, I was concerned about a 15-year-old in my courtroom. I had her assessed because of my concerns, and she was hospitalized. She's okay today, but I was able to recognize the signs and have her assessed, and then she did need hospitalization. So for, for five years, I've asked that, that we look at implementing this program in our schools, and time, time has been a barrier, and certainly, time is valuable, but I think we're at a point where we've got to find a way. For four years, I've made the report to the commissioners as chair of the Community Child Protection Team, and by the way, many of the members of our team were here earlier, and some stayed and some have left, but they were here to support this effort, including Director of DSS, Public Health was here, others. And, and I've reported this has been a gap in services, and, and, you know, and this last time, the commissioners called me out on it and said, well, what are you doing about it? Well, I'm reporting to you about it. And they circled back to Assistant County Manager Kathy Stute and came back to me, and Ms. Estep was gracious enough to meet with us to, to talk about this important issue. Board of Public Health has written you, asking you to take action on this training issue as a matter of public health. We're asking you to make this an immediate priority, and I'm going to ask Kim Heck from Trillium Health Resources to come and give you a brief overview of what youth mental health first aid looks like, because it's important for you to have that understanding, and then I'll, then I'll have an ask for you.
Thank you Judge, thank you Kathy and Madam Chairperson. As a licensed counselor and a licensed clinical addiction specialist, mental health first aid to me is essential for anybody who's going to be working with, volunteering, or even living with somebody, a younger person. This mental health first aid is an educational program for those people. It's based on the same philosophy of regular first aid, but in the case of mental health first aid, it was created specifically for individuals who have little or no background in mental health education. The training helps participants recognize the signs and symptoms of the most common mental illnesses in young people in the United States specifically. It also helps them learn strategies for someone who may be developing a mental illness, is in a crisis, or discovering resources that may be available to them. Similar to regular first aid, though, participants do not learn how to diagnose or treat, we leave that up to the professional clinicians. I'd like you to just take a look in your folder, there is a one-page, it's purple and white, it's a training description, it includes an outline of the training and some statistics. What I think is really particularly important to know here is that mental illnesses in young people are very common. One in five young people have a mental illness. Half of all mental illnesses have their first symptomology by the age of 14, 75% by the age of 24. This is a young person's illness that can potentially affect the rest of their lives. I'd like you to think about how a mental illness could delay the maturation of a young person's brain, their academics, their social skills, et cetera. The earlier, the, the earlier the intervention, the greater the chances for recovery and positive outcomes for these young people. The training itself is an eight-hour national certified program that's valid for three years. It's been vetted by 10 universities and is, has received the SAMSA National Registry of Evidence-Based Programs and Practices recognition, and SAMSA is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Trillium provides the training and training materials at no charge. I want to repeat that. Trillium provides the training and training materials at no charge. The trainings can be held onsite at any one of the schools or at the Trillium offices on Shipyard Boulevard. In addition to the certification that participants receive, they can also potentially receive contact hours, eight contact hours, which several licensing, credentialing, and professional organizations accept toward the members' annual continuing education requirements. Through presentations, interactive activities, videos, and practice scenarios, the training covers four different areas. The most common mental illnesses in young people, which includes anxiety, depression, and substance use. An overview of typical adolescent development. The ALGIE Plan, which is an evidence-based best-practice strategy for reaching out to and assisting a young person. And the fourth one, locating available resources. The last three to four hours of the training focuses on practicing the strategies in small groups while they process actual scenarios that young people have experienced. Suicide, suicide prevention, and self-harm are woven into the training during the whole day. The eight hours can be delivered in one eight-hour day, or it can be split into two four-hour days, as long as those two four-hour days are within a two-week period. An example of how one regional county incorporated the training into their goal of having every teacher certified is to take advantage of the January and August teacher workdays. They started certifying their middle and high school student teachers first by doing an average of three eight-hour trainings in a single day for three days in a row. That's nine trainings in three days with a maximum participation of 30 participants, which was 270 newly certified teachers in mental health first aid. Once the bulk of those teachers were certified, the schedule changed to one to two eight-hour sessions to accommodate the new hires and to reach the rest of the elementary teachers. In New Hanover County, over 200 teachers and counselors have already taken the training through Trillium. There is consistently two comments or questions that are received every time anybody from New Hanover County schools takes the course. The first one is, how come we didn't get this training when we first started? We would have handled things differently and been better able to help our students. The second one was, every teacher, staff, and parent, staff member, excuse me, and parent needs to take this course. Mental health first aid is one of the core pieces of the mental, mental health puzzle, but this and other programs such as anti-bullying, resiliency, and other programs are all part of helping to make our young people healthy, strong, thriving, and resilient. If the board chooses to make mental health first aid, youth mental health first aid trainings, part of the New Hanover policies, or chooses to create calendars to start rotating current teachers and new teachers through the programs, or through the trainings, Trillium can help with that. One thing that I'd like to add last is that individuals who have taken the regular first aid and mental health, and then youth mental health first aid, have said that they're both valuable, but that there are far greater opportunities, obviously, to use the youth mental health first aid. I've left you with those folders, those are something that you can take and keep with you. The booklets, though, I do have to take back, those are our actual training workbooks, if you'd like to just scan through them before we're done, but I will have to pick them up before we leave. Thank you so much for your attention.
But if you take the class, I'll bet you can keep the book. I want to thank you again for your time and thank you for moving us up the agenda. I'm personally very grateful because at 11 o'clock tomorrow morning, I'm appearing in front of the State Board of Education to share with them information about our school justice partnership. They're taking a huge interest in it, it's spreading across the state, but the State Board is taking an interest, and I'm going to appear there with Billy Laster, the Deputy Secretary of Public Safety in charge of juvenile justice tomorrow morning, so I'm grateful to get home a little bit earlier. So thank you for, for moving me up. So as we seek to become a more resilient community and help our children be more resilient, I'm asking that you make youth mental health first aid mandatory for all teachers and staff, and when I say staff, I'm talking about all staff. Custodians, cafeteria workers, staff, everyone. Kim mentioned parents. They're outside of your purview, but one of the things that, that we intend to do is to, especially as, as the schools take this on as a priority, is to promote it in the community for parents, too. We, we believe that that's important as well. I'm asking that you set this as policy and set a framework for accomplishing training of teachers and staff. I don't have a particular timeframe in mind. Ms. Estep and I and Kathy Stute talked about that. That's something that, that you, with your knowledge of resources and with your connection to the professional staff that you have, are in a much better position to do sooner than later is better, particularly when you take into account the serious issue that we're dealing with. I deal with death every day now. I wish I didn't. Lots of those deaths just aren't preventable, it's our opioid epidemic. When I have a child who's concerned about self-harm, that can be prevented. So we're asking you to set some reasonable time for all existing staff, and then also set a policy for new hires as to when a new hire will have completed the training and be certified, and that they, they retain that certification. The online certification that's available is much shorter than the eight hours, don't think there's any expense with that either, and so it's a, it's a very doable thing. Not only will Trillium provide the trainers and the materials at no cost, but the offer has been made over years past to bring in trainers from other parts of the state to expand the capacity for doing multiple trainings in a single day to address the needs of your system with limited time that you have. So I'm grateful for your time, I'm grateful for your consideration on this issue. I truly believe that this training will advance the issue of school safety and will advance well-being for our children. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you for your time.
I just have one question. You look at some of the mental health issues, and I know you do a lot of DSS, and professionally we, I do some of it, too, in runs economy, but you look at, mental health is a problem for, can be a problem for all children, but specifically, a lot of the cases that you see, backgrounds are similar. How do you, with this training, is there a way to focus specifically on, on some of those backgrounds to kind of recognize the possibility that mental health issues may exist instead of seeing it, because sometimes it's too late, as you know?
So, so the training focuses on recognizing the danger signs with whoever they're found in. One of the dangers of looking at that is that we may miss danger signs if we assume that because more kids from a particular background might be at risk than others, we'll miss, and the, and the truth is that with, with children who are thinking about self-harm, there aren't any, any socioeconomic barriers or, or anything else. That kind of, of, of issue lurks in families all over our community. You know, I happen to see it in, in the work that I do, because I do deal with families in, in, in similar demographics. Their parents suffer terribly from mentally ill, and, and then the children do as well. But the training is, is, is really addressed to help, help our teachers and staff that see children every day to look, to notice something different, to see something different, to see the warning signs, and then know what to do with that information. If that, if that answers your question, then, thank you.
Is the offer still open to bringing those trainers in from other areas?
I believe so, yes. We have several, we have several different trainers throughout the Trillium organization, but yes, there's, and actually, there are other trainers in the, just in this county that may be able to help as well.
What's your capacity in terms of maximum number you could do, say, in a week's time?
Well, it's limited to 30 people in one class, so it just depends on how many trainers there can be. Of course, you don't want to give, you don't want to have a trainer teach every day, you know, eight hours a day, so it would just depend on how many trainers we could get.
I'm just running a number, we've got 200 that have been trained, about 4,000 employees, so we're talking about 3,800 people that would, over the course, probably the next 12 months.
Right.
So, speaking for New Hanover County and, and myself, we'll make that pitch to Trillium. We're, we're happy to, because, I mean, that offer was made and was made over again, and, and we're happy to go back and say, look at this opportunity, send people. So we're willing to help with that, absolutely.
Our training department, logistically, deals with a lot of different issues, so I'm sure that they would be able to figure something out.
Yeah, I mean, maybe working with, you know, I think going along the lines of what Mr. Wartman is saying is maybe prioritizing, looking at who, who we need to get to first, and then working on from there, assuming that this is what the, you know, the, the direction the board would like to go. You know, that's why I, I wanted to get this in front of everyone. To me, it, it does speak to safety, it's something that's, with having five children in the schools, and it's something our family has dealt with directly, our own family, and then, you know, with the, the friends that my kids have brought in, you know, we see it a, a lot, and it's, it is very difficult and challenging to know how to respond to issues or to behaviors when you haven't had that training and you don't know what you're dealing with. So to give our, our teachers and our faculty and our staff the tools necessary to, number one, recognize, and number two, respond, I think that's huge.
So if I had to, and I'll invite Kim to disagree with me, in terms of a priority for your population, high school, middle school first?
Mm-hmm.
But elementary, after, it's actually, this particular training is not designed for the elementary, but there's a adaptation, but high school and middle school would be first priority?
Well, I'd like to say, I actually have gone through that training when I worked with communities and schools and actually taught for many years also, and I don't think there is any one particular group, in fact, it's quite shocking, children that you would think wouldn't be at risk often are the ones that most at risk, especially high-performing students, and you're right about the middle school and the high school areas, those, especially middle school with social media now, it's extremely important, it would, every, I think it's invaluable. It really helped me, I wish I'd had it 20 years before I took it.
So maybe the, what we can do is ask for you all to come back next month, and we could vote on a proposal, so if, if we could direct Dr. Markley, you and, and staff to work out a proposal with you all, and then, and then we could bring it forward for a vote next month.
Would love to come back.
All right, is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one other issue that, just so, I mean, just not, a little off-topic, Sandy Hook Promise rolled out today county-wide, which is the anonymous reporting system, and I can tell you, we've already had calls to that system.
Great.
Let's see if these safeties are a topic for today.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Circling back to item seven, number seven, item B, policies, Ms. Nichols?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The first policy, 1350 community participation in Board of Education meetings. During our committee meeting today, we determined that we'd like to add more guidance and more procedures, so we're going to ask you to let us put this one back before the committee. So the next policy that we want to consider is, can you scroll up to the next one? Attorney for the Board of Education, and we want to make sure that we, in case we change and we have a different attorney, we want to say his or her, so we've included that. The, the last paragraph, though, is the one that you need...
Where is it?
Whoa, okay, that you need to consider. Now, I'm going to ask you to waive the first reading for this, so we're going to vote on it tonight, but the main thing is that we should receive a review of the legal services that's provided by our attorney, which is Mr. Bullard, from the superintendent, but the board, because that's, he's our board atti- that's, he's our board attorney. We need to set goals for him, and we need to set an evaluation format so that we all are rising to the goals that we expect and that the legal services that we need and that are performed. So, Ms. Zestep, I'm not sure. We also need to set amounts that we anticipate the evaluation to be completed. So, it should not certainly be as extensive as the superintendent's, but it should be one that sets the goals, and then we can, as individuals, determine how our board attorney is performing.
So, that, that's actually something that, in my board chairperson report, I wanted to talk about, a work session, so that maybe could be a work session topic?
That would be good.
Okay, yeah.
So, we can get that in place, okay? So, I'm going to ask then if we can approve this policy for tonight. Waive first reading and then vote on it.
All right, so is there a motion to waive first reading on policy 1410?
Move to waive first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of waiving first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is waived. Now, we need to vote on the policy itself?
Yes, please.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve policy 1410, Attorney for the Board of Education?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Okay, the next policy, 6082, Employee Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct. I'll ask Dr. Wilmers if he'll review this for us.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. The Employee Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct establishes the board's belief that teachers should be aware of how social media can be misused in the communications with students, and it established that several years ago. But one of the things we didn't include at the time, because it has sort of changed a little bit since then, is the use of texting. And we did not say that you could not text students during that. So, what we did was made a change in this, that we not only say that you cannot be communicating through social networking, but you should also not be communicating through the use of texting. Unless, and this is something else that's changed, the system now uses a lot of different software to communicate between teachers and their students in ways that help establish guidelines, establish curriculum, establish what's going on in homework. So, we want to make sure that teachers can continue to do that, and we realize that as we go through the next couple of centuries, that's going to be the way we communicate with students. So, with that, we added texting that they cannot text, and we said that parents and guardians shall give written permission before the students are allowed to access or connect with apps or online programs specifically used for communicating academic information, instructional materials, or teacher directives. So, what we would do is we're going to have another form, that at the beginning of the school year, we'll go home to parents that will explain that these programs are being used to connect with their children during the school year, and that's if they give permission so we can do that. And then, any program that might change during the school year would also require the parents at that time to look at what they're using. This changes year to year, so this gives us a little flexibility, but it hopefully answers the question. We polled the principals on how to use this, and of course, Ms. Brinson was very helpful in explaining what we're doing right now with students. Can I answer any questions or help?
If, say, a student, well, everything is so much online nowadays, so how you could miss assignments is beyond me, but say there was some direct communication, a student needed to clarify an assignment, is, and it wasn't a particular program, could they still do that through text? I mean, you could do it through email, too, but I'm just asking, could they do it through text, or would that apply?
You know, they can, and it's hard for me to sit here and say, "No, they won't," and the teacher won't write back. The teacher will help. But what we're seeing is that a lot of this communication is now happening within these programs. And so, I think the students are learning, this is the program we use, the teacher is using that, and so that communication. But, you know, I'm not going to tell you that if a student asks for help in text, a teacher ain't going to help. If it's, if it's happening all the time, we're asking that the teacher check with their principal and say, "Look, this is the situation." But overall, hopefully, it'll happen through the programs we use. That's a good point, though.
Yeah, is that, is that in this body of changes that you're bringing up? Because that, that would be something that probably need to be addressed, because it is going to happen, because the kids are so used to texting and asking questions that way.
We do say that they shouldn't text. There should be no texting between the two, so the teacher should establish that.
The teacher would have had to have given the student their personal cellphone number, and that would be a concern in and of itself. If we're talking about apps, communicating through an app, then you're signed into the app, and you're communicating that way. But direct texting is something that serious concerns about.
Why isn't there a zero tolerance policy right now against direct texting from a student to a teacher?
Well, because I can't monitor that as a school system. We've spent a lot of time tonight talking about safety. If I don't know that you're communicating as a teacher directly to a student, then I got no way to be, to monitor that, to make sure nothing inappropriate is happening as part of that process.
So, if we have no more questions or comments, we need to waive first reading and vote on this, please.
I just have one thing. I know we're waiving first reading for these four policies, but I think the point of having a first reading and a second reading and approval is putting those policies out there, allowing the public to look at those policies, or us look at those policies, bring back any questions that we have on the second time. I understand that there's very specific situations where we need to waive first reading due to emergencies or things that are happening instantly, but I don't think, I mean, these, obviously, they're good policies, but I don't think that all of these we need to waive first reading in, because it defeats the point of actually having a first reading and a second reading.
I'm not requesting a first, to waive the first reading on this. This is fine to go first and second reading, just like always. There's not a rush on, I mean, it would be good to have, but there's not a rush on it.
Right, in this case, because it's such a part of life with kids as far as communication, I would just, if somebody wants to give feedback, I'd be more than happy to hear that before I make a decision. I'm just, it's just, you know, it's such a, and I agree with, you know, Dr. Markley, that we don't want teachers and students texting, and that leads to all kinds of other issues, but on the other hand, it is such a part of their culture, there might be some kind of feedback we might need to hear before we make the decision. That's just my take on it.
So, are we?
I appreciate that, Dr. Wilmers. I was just reading the text, and it said I was going to ask for waiver of first reading, so.
Are we withdrawing that motion?
And then, we'll look at the next one and see if that's one that, I think the next one we do want to review and think about, and think about waiving first reading. So, if we'll, we'll send this one back and bring it back to you next month.
Okay.
And in the meantime, let us know if you want additional comments or changes, or if you have questions about concerns.
I do have, I do have something that I think I had asked about before, that is it possible to put these policies on in such a way, online, so that we could garner public comment?
Yes.
Is there a way to do that, Ms. Brinson?
Yes, and Mrs. Adams can do that for us.
We do that?
We do?
And we do have a form that they can fill out to comment about the policies.
So, but is there any way to, to show that to others, to others online, so that they can see the comments that have already been made?
We don't do that at this time. We just share it with the policy committee. Right now, all of the comments are around dress code. I already judged that we have, so dress code's not on there. That is the comments that were.
Okay. But there's not like an air, a way to, like, for someone to go in and say on, you know, to come in and say, "On line 22, I suggest this following change." They would have to, they would have to just send a general feedback form in.
Yeah.
I'll swivel this way.
Technically, yes, there's a way to do it, you know, if you did it like a Google form kind of thing.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
The issue is, when you have such a massive number of people who can make comments, trying to discern whose comments go where, because it does draw a line, it'd be very hard to read, when you're having so many people who could possibly comment on it, because it does kind of draw a line with what you're highlighting, and then your comment goes out to the side. And it uses your name, whatever your Google account, it would limit to people who have Google accounts. If you don't have a Google account, then you wouldn't be able to comment, so it would kind of limit to that as well.
So, if they were going to comment about a specific piece, they'd have to do that directly in that comment and not into the document.
I'm wondering if we could do both. I mean, I don't know if anyone wants to comment, you know, on a specific line item for a policy. I was just wondering if it was possible, like, if there is a, if someone has a, you know, an actual legal question or wants to, or is saying, like, you know, "Line 23 should read this way."
Well, if we put it up there in a form other than a PDF form, where people could copy and paste, so they could copy the line that they're referencing and paste it into, and then write their comment, so that way, it's right there. You can't do that with a PDF. You can't highlight, copy into it. But if we do it in a Word form or something else where they can, and even actually put number lines next to it, that make it easier when they're filling out their form to put their comments in.
Yeah. Yeah, if we could do that, at least put the number lines, so that if they're referencing a certain line item, even if it's not something that we're currently changing, if there's something else they have an issue with, that would be, make for an easier reference. I'm just trying to think, so that we can, we can encourage public feedback.
Okay, I'll work with Cabot, and we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, let's move on to the last policy, Use of Service Animals. So, this is a totally revised policy, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bullard if he will go through the policy as well as the procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. This is a proposed revision to your service animal policy and the procedures for implementing it. We have updated it to clarify some of the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The two types of service animals that are allowed, which the previous policy mentioned, are dogs and miniature horses. The previous policy placed some requirements on individuals wanting to bring service animals onto our property that we are removing, such as asking for proof that the service animal is actually trained, that the person who the service animal is identified as serving actually has a disability, or what the disability is rather, and proof that the owner has insurance. And some other requirements have been removed to make it in compliance with current ADA regulations. There is also a provision in there that carries forth what the previous policy said, that there are circumstances in which the service animal can be removed, which is from the ADA regulations, which state that the service animal can be removed, that the animal is not in strict control of the handler, or is not housebroken, or if the presence of the animal fundamentally authors a school district's service activity or program. And it also, the proposed procedures put forth a, some guidelines on how to handle a situation in which someone wants to bring a service animal into the school system in close proximity to another individual who may have a disability that limits that person's ability to be in close proximity to the service animal, such as an allergy. And in that situation, it provides, as recommended by the ADA regulations, a procedure whereby the rights of both individuals are protected, so that accommodations can be made for both in a manner that keeps both of the individuals with disabilities safe and protected.
During our policy committee meeting, we did add a condition, Mr. Bullard, and...
Did, in the policy itself, we did, the policy committee did notice that it, in the very first paragraph, under the headline, Distinction Between Service Animal and Comfort Animal, there's actually a redundancy. It mentions the miniature horse twice, so the recommendation was to just put a period in the third sentence after the phrase "mental disability," and eliminate the remaining clause in that sentence. And also, at the bottom of that page, to add another bullet point, that the miniature horse may qualify as a service animal, add that if there is proof that it has received its required vaccinations, because that is also one of the things a property owner can require for access by a service animal, is proof that the service animal has received legally required vaccinations. I believe those were the only changes to the text that the policy committee discussed, Ms. Nichols, although I do need to double-check the statutory site at the end to make sure it is correct, but with the board's approval, I could do that. If the board chooses to approve the policy, I could double-check that and make any change to the numbering of the statute at the end if necessary.
And in the past, when we've done this, Ms. Zestep, we've done it with the idea of responsibility that we receive a completed copy of the policy with all the changes, and we, so we prove it on condition, because I want to make sure that we have everything in there that needs to be there.
Mr. Bullard, do you think that you need to add something where it says a miniature horse may qualify as a service? Under this policy, I know you have "and" in the fourth bullet, but you need to be more specific that you need, do you think that's specific enough to show that it needs to meet all of the recommendations?
I'm not following where, Mr. Wortman, you're referring to, the fourth bullet under...
No, just, yeah, the fourth bullet, you have "and," but I'm just making sure that it's specific enough to show that it has to meet all five of those requirements.
Well, the "and" would be moved down to the fifth one, because we're adding the sixth one regarding the vaccinations. Yeah, all of them would have to apply.
Right.
Yes, that's why it's "and" instead of "or."
So, Mr. Bullard, if we can get this copy sent to us tomorrow, we'll feel more confident in what we're voting on.
So, are you saying, is there a reason, then, to waive first reading on this, still?
I think so. I think we need to clarify with the public as soon as we can every...
Yeah, our current policy is in violation of ADA, so this is...
Okay, so...
Question, waive first reading, then?
All right. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading has been waived. Is there a motion to approve policy 8432 with the additional changes, with adding bullet point number six? What was the other change, Mr. Bullard?
In the third line, under the heading, on the policy, not the procedures, the heading, "Distinction Between Service Animal and Comfort Animal," in the third line, just put a period after the phrase "mental disability" and delete the rest of the sentence.
Okay, and then the cross-reference at the bottom?
The legal cross-reference.
Legal cross-reference, okay.
Yes, and then, with the board, I would ask the board to give me the authority to correct the legal reference if, in fact, it is incorrect.
Okay. All right, with those additional changes, and then with the clear copy sent to us, I'll say as soon as possible, is there a motion to approve policy 8432, Use of Service Animals and Procedure?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Any opposed? It is approved.
And that concludes the policies, first reading and the waiving of the policies. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Item C, immersion presentation, appendix F, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. I am very excited to ask Ms. Leanne Lampley, principal of International School at Gregory. I wanted to make sure that she was still here. And then also presenting with her will be Dr. Morgan, principal of New Hanover High School, to talk about the transition to the high school program. Ms. Lampley?
I didn't know I had an option, so I'm still here. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to share a little bit about the immersion program and our Mandarin program at Gregory. I am also joined tonight by my two wonderful assistant principals, Sherry Ashley and Jean Hall. So just a little bit about our program. We have, when I first got here four years ago, we did have a presentation. I feel like we've come a long way, so this is exciting to present this to you tonight. So just a little bit about our program. It's still a little shocking to know that people across the community still don't know about us. So this opportunity tonight to share to you all and to the public is very important to me. We are a K-5 dual-language program in New Hanover County. We're a public magnet school. We have enrollment by lottery. We enroll in kindergarten right now. Each year, we enroll 88 kindergarten students. And we, ever since we've, I've been there and started the lottery process, we've been full every year. So that is exciting. We are 50-50 dual-language model in kindergarten through 5th grade. And what that means is it's, we have one day English and one day in Spanish as early as kindergarten. So when students walk in the first day of school, they're assigned a homeroom teacher. That could be a Spanish teacher, or it could be the partner, which is their English counterpart. And then the next day, those two classes switch. So this model continues all the way through 5th grade. Again, like I said, students would have two teachers. And their Spanish teachers are from their native countries, as well as our Mandarin teacher. Currently, we have about 12 international teachers from all over the world. And so our population is very diverse as a staff and as students, so. A lot of times we get questions, we are K-8, so how are we different as a middle school? Why would people want to stay at Gregory instead of going to their traditional school? So a little bit that makes us different is we do have a smaller setting as compared to most middle schools. I think our largest class right now might have 20 students. Our students have three electives instead of two, and they also have a longer school day. We offer language opportunities in middle school. And those two programs that we offer are Mandarin and connexiones. And I'm going to explain those a little bit later in the presentation. Like I said before, smaller class size. Right now, we have about 100 middle schoolers total, 6th through 8th grade. A lot of those kids have been there, or been together, I should say, as a cohort since kindergarten. Also, we start our day at 8 o'clock, just like in elementary school. And we end our day at 3:30, like a traditional middle school. So our students ride the buses to Gregory on an elementary bus. But then in the afternoon, when they go home, if they're middle school students, they do dismiss from Williston and they ride those buses. Currently, we have a blended model of immersion and non-immersion students. And what that looks like, right now, we are all immersion kindergarten through 3rd grade. And we have one class in 4th grade and two classes in 5th grade. And these were the original Gregory students that stayed with us all the way through 5th grade at this point. We are seeing that our original Gregory students are wanting to stay in middle school. So that's really promising because they get that opportunity to start Mandarin, even though they had not been in the immersion program. Until fall of 2022, and then all the way kindergarten through 8th grade, those will be all immersion students. Just wanted to share a minute about our population. Kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade are the students that, our 3rd grade students was the first class since the merge from Forest Hills to Gregory. And I'm very proud of the diversity that we offer at Gregory. You can kind of see across the board, we're about a third, a third, and a third. We've worked really hard with our outreach opportunities, going out into communities, participating in magnet fair, and really just taking on every opportunity we can to educate the community about what we offer. Again, like I said, we are not a transient population. Once our kids get in, we typically retain them. We don't lose students. Unless in 5th grade, we have seen some that want to go to their traditional middle schools. And the majority of those students were our original Gregory students, who had anticipated that their whole school career up to that point. So we're real proud about our diversity. Our elective opportunities at Gregory in middle school, like I said, we offer Mandarin. One thing about Mandarin is when students are interested in Mandarin, we want them to get in in 6th grade, because the program is a pretty advanced program. And so there's a Year 1, a Year 2, and a Year 3, being 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. And so once they get in 6th grade, by the time they're in 7th grade, it's really hard to join that class. So they need to enroll in 6th to be part of that program. And all students are eligible to be in that program if they so desire. It does not have to be just immersion students. And then our connexiones program is specific to our students who have been in the K-5 dual-language immersion program, because it also is an advanced course in global studies and research, once they get to middle school. And then we also offer CTE courses. Right now, we have a virtual lab model where our students are working online. And there's a teacher in New Hanover County that's providing that instruction. And then we also have one of our staff members that's in there to provide support, to make sure that they're on task and they're being successful. And, you know, we just got those grades in and we're just very proud of the work they're doing and they're being very successful in that model. Please stop me if you have questions along the way. I get excited about it and keep going. So just stop me if you have questions. Just a little bit about our connexiones curriculum. Our middle school students, just like I shared before, it is more of a global research program. And our students get to really dig deep and use all of the information, all of the speaking and listening and reading and writing. They get to use that during this connexiones curriculum, in this research model or slash global studies model, that's going to help continue their Spanish language skills. Little bit about that program. It's organized into six main topics. And those are divided into three units of five lessons each. So Unit 1 is considered 6th grade, Unit 2 would be 7th, and Unit 3 would be 8th. So as students go through a year's program, they're touching on a global society, geography, environment, education, economy, and politics. They do lots of research, and I've got some examples to show you that I think you'll enjoy. It's pretty impressive. So this is just an actual work sample. This was a graphic organizer where students had to compare the educational system in the United States to a country of their choice. So they could pick, so there's a lot of choice involved. They get to choose a country. They did their research and they created this to start with. It's hard to see, so that's why I'm kind of talking through it. Then they had, from that information, they had to actually research the literacy status of five different countries, again, of their choice, with varying economic status. And then they had to graph that data. And then from there, they create an outline of, before their final product. And then their finished product, again, is all written, because our teacher and the program really believes in practicing that those grammar and writing skills to help strengthen that. So they do tons of writing in connexiones. Oh. Sorry about that. This actual activity was a grammar practice activity where the students had to write a recipe. And this recipe was the ingredients of a good school. And they have to list out their ingredients, and then they had to write formal demands on how that works. So it's pretty impressive. So I have a video presentation. I hope you can hear it. Sometimes we struggle with the volume. But this presentation is about agriculture and the impact of certain agricultural practices on the environment. And this was from one of our 8th grade students last year.
Connexiones sobre los cultivos en China. China está ubicado en el este de Asia y cerca del Mongolia, Vietnam y otros países. ¿Qué productos cultivan? Hay muchos en China porque es muy muy grande. Hay trigo, maíz, frutas y también azúcar. Y eso es un ejemplo de maíz muy feliz y muy bueno. El impacto en el cambio climático desafortunadamente es muy alto y severo. Las productos son comunes como maíz y azúcar, pero los métodos que usan los agricultores no son buenos. El país de China emite más CO2 que todas las otras países en el mundo. ¿Por qué? Ellos usan fertilizante nitrogeno y no es bueno para el medio ambiente de una manera. Eso es un foto de fertilizante nitrogeno y una conversación entre los agricultores. Y ellos están, hay otros más fertilizantes que ellos pueden usar, pero ese es lo más barato entonces usan y emiten CO2. Mis oraciones, China podría invertir más dinero en agroecología para conservar la tierra y prevenir más emisiones de CO2. Las 300 millones de agricultores de China deberían parar de usar fertilizante de nitrogeno porque no es beneficioso para el medio ambiente. China no necesitaría de parar de cultivar cultivos eficientes y buenos para la tierra. Los agricultores cultivarían cultivos que son beneficiosos y usarían métodos prácticos. Ellos fertilizarían los cultivos con fertilizante agroecológico. Gracias.
So that particular student started in kindergarten, so that was a finished product, I guess. Now I've passed her on to Rob Morgan, so.
Well, it's worth, I happened to see her in a Mandarin class today, so she's at the very least trialing.
So with that being said, we'll move into our Mandarin component. Again, starts in 6th grade. It is not the same model. It's not an every other day. It's actually an elective that they go to for about a 50-minute period every day. But you will get to also see an example at the end of three years, what that presentation looks like. So first year, these are all of the topics that Mrs. Stella Lee covers, who is our teacher. Again, students are starting to learn those basic brushstrokes, structure of characters, tracing and writing, radicals, typing, listening, reading. And they're just really getting those foundational skills and learning how to take notes. And, let's see, this is an example of a first-year student. They had to draw a picture of themselves and then they had to write about themselves. So this is a typical after one year. They also learn a lot about culture, so that's what's unique about our building, is because we have so many people from all over the world. Not only are students learning language, but they're just being immersed in culture in every grade level. So these are some of the things, they actually make dumplings in the class. Go through all of the, a lot of the celebrations that she experiences in China. So here's some paper lanterns that they've done in class. Second year, again, kind of the same thing, but just an upper, we were up in the ante a little bit, such as writing skills. They're learning at this point between 100 and 300 characters. And just a little bit about Mandarin, it's after about, after you're fluent with about 3,000 characters, you can read a newspaper. So at this point, they're learning about 100 to 300 characters compared to the alphabet of United States at 26.
Talk about the typing skills. How do they practice?
Excuse me?
Your keyboarding skills, it says typing skills?
They do, well, typing, yes. They have keyboards that have the language on the keyboard. Here's an example of some work that they've done. They had to do like a comic strip, telling a story. So this was a second-year Mandarin student, 7th grader. And then again, culture, they learn a lot about Chinese clothing, animals, blue and white porcelain, opera. And then they actually do some artwork to go along with that. And third year, again, we're, again, upping our skills with grammar, sentence structures, writing skills, and upping our writing assignments using 300 to 500 characters. So she's actually bought Chinese calligraphy pens that they work on the strokes. She teaches them characters by using kung fu, so it's very, it's very interactive. Kung fu motions to give them ideas of, or remember how to write the strokes. It's a very interactive class, and the teacher is a gift. I'll just say that. The kids love her. And this is after third year, so you can see the progression of writing, of storytelling. And again, in the culture, origami, they actually create these things in class. And so this is a presentation about a student's future house. So they had to design their future house and then present the floor plans to the class with descriptions, so. And then this is also an 8th grader. So she's actually bought Chinese calligraphy pens that they work on the strokes. She teaches them characters by using Kung Fu. So it's very, it's very interactive. Kung Fu motions to give them ideas of remember how to write the strokes. It's a very interactive class, and the teacher is a gift. I'll just say that. The kids love her. And this is after third year. So you can see the progression of writing, of storytelling. And again, in the culture of origami, they actually create these things in class. And so this is a presentation about a student's future house. So they had to design their future house and then present the floor plans to the class with descriptions. And then this is also an eighth grader. So as you can see, they do lots of oral presentations in class as well. All right, so the elect, those are the electives we offer at Gregory. But of course, we want to give our students as many opportunities to make their middle school experience as normal as possible. So I'll keep talking. We share electives with Williston, so we have to, over the summer, we have to align our schedule with Williston based on sixth, seventh, and eighth grade electives so that our students can participate in some of those other electives and other opportunities, such as art, band, PE, orchestra. Because not everyone right now has that language interest. But, you know, we are, it's growing. It's growing in popularity. And we are now already, I just got a call today about someone wanting to enroll for next year for sixth grade because of the Mandarin program. So again, we share those electives with Williston. And like I said before, our schedules align. We use a year-long block schedule. And our immersion students that have been in, our kids that have been in immersion K-5 also have their middle school science taught in Spanish by one of our participate teachers from Ecuador. And then we also build in time, school-wide, for intervention and acceleration kindergarten through eighth grade. One thing that we use to assess our progress is the Apple assessment. That's the assessment of performance toward proficiency in language. And it's administered for the first time this year. It will be administered in second grade. In the past, it's been administered in fifth and eighth. Again, only our immersion students take this assessment. And there's four sections. There's an interpersonal, listening, speaking, presentational writing, and interpretive listening component to the assessment. And our scores indicate, when we compare those to what DPI expects, expectations and the proficiency, we are exceeding DPI expectations. Even looking at that so closely, though, we want our presentational writing to be even stronger because even though we're above DPI standards, we see the need to work on that a little bit more. So we built in an addition of Spanish grammar writing class in third, fourth, and fifth grade with our Conexiones teacher. So she, our students actually go to her for additional work on their grammar and writing so that we can boost those scores up. And all students, regardless if they're in the immersion program or not, at least get to have Spanish as a special or an elective in kindergarten through fifth grade. We do offer advanced placement opportunities. In our sixth grade, we offer compact math. Seventh, same thing. Eighth grade, right now, we have Earth and Environmental Science, American History One, English One. We have Math One, which is a face-to-face, year-long option. And then we have Math One and Two, which is a self-paced course through North Carolina VPS. And we also have, let's see, we receive weekly support from our VPS coordinator who comes out. And then, again, we follow the MTSS process, as does everybody else in New Hanover County. We offer that tiered support for all of our students. Tier one is what's being done at core in the classroom. Tier two is some classroom instruction plus some intervention, as we see that it's needed. And then tier three moves into that very intense category where they receive a third layer of support. And this is usually on a pull-out basis. We have, we use progress monitoring data to collect our, see how our kids are progressing. And we do involve our parents in that MTSS process and offer flexible grouping with our students. So as they master a skill, they go back. So it's very skill-specific. Just because they start in a group, they don't stay in that same group all year. We're hoping to get them in, move them out. We have enrichments, enrichment, and intervention opportunities. All students participate in enrichment or intervention throughout the school. There's a built-in time. This year, we have kindergarten through fifth grade has the first 15 minutes of the day of morning meeting where that's where we hit those social, emotional pieces, where students greet each other, they learn how to interact appropriately, and they have time with their teacher on a very low-key level where they can just get some conversation going and talk. And then for the next 45 minutes is intervention, school-wide, so we can pull all of our resources throughout the building to help run small groups. Middle school has the same thing. It's just at a different time because we're, we have to match that schedule with Williston, so it's a little tricky there. And then this year, we're super excited. Every Friday, kindergarten through fifth grade, school-wide, we have clubs. And that takes place during that intervention time, one time a week. And so every child in our building has an opportunity to be in a club of something that they have signed up for, that they enjoy, whether that be STEM, cooking, Lego, Zumba. And we're really just trying to meet those kids on a social, emotional level. They are not grade-specific, so some of our kids are like K and one, might be mixing together. So they get to meet other students that maybe they typically don't get to interact with. So it's been a very positive thing for our kids. Have a global passport club. So, and then our middle schools also offer clubs. Again, a little bit of different model, but they offer the same thing. We have no attendance zone, so it doesn't matter where you live. If you're in New Hanover County, you can attend Gregory because we do provide bus transportation. Again, six, eight students will ride home on the Williston buses, but arrive on Gregory buses. And even our car riders are dismissed from Williston's campus. So it takes a lot of coordination between the two schools, but it works, and it's been really good. Excuse me? We, I think right now, it's probably Carolina Beach.
Can your kids play sports at Williston, right?
Excuse me?
Your kids, if they want to play sports, play for Williston?
Yes, yes. So we do have a lot of our kids who play on Williston Sports. So we have also got a very active PTA with over 200 members now. We even have a part of our PTA that is supporting Williston's PTAs because we are in a joint effort, working together. Do I, you have any questions?
It's one of the largest immersion programs in the state. And once the middle school fills out completely, it will probably be the largest program in the state.
We have over 500 kids right now.
Did we get that big mud puddle fixed in the courtyard?
Did we get what? Oh, I hope so.
That's probably an Eddie question.
So what happens when they go on to high school? So Dr. Morgan's here. What happens next?
So a big part of our goal was just to be able to continue to offer the students something, since they've had so much time and energy in their immersion courses. We weren't trying to really replicate any immersion program, but the way that we've set it up, they have about a quarter of their day at the high school level is still spent in the language of their choice. And in some of the cases, it's both the languages. The student in the first presentation, I was saying, I did, I didn't even realize she did the Spanish one until I saw her up there. Because I saw her in a Mandarin class today. And I mean, to me, she's fluent in three languages right now.
Now, Rob, you're grouping the kids who have this skill in their own Spanish class, correct?
Yes. So, and one, so one of, and one of the concerns that we had had initially was, you know, there was requests for a lot of these eighth graders, rising ninth graders, to go straight into an AP Spanish class. Our concern was that we needed the opportunity to get a feel for whether or not we could prepare them for an AP Spanish class, in part because the AP courses are often, the AP exams are often as much about their maturity and the time that they've had to experience the different courses so that they can pull in to, you know, respond to these, the DBQs that they have on the AP exams and the database questions. And we just didn't feel like that was going to be something we could do for rising ninth graders. But about three, four weeks ago, the department chair came in and said, "I've absolutely got a handful that I will be able to prepare for the AP exam next semester." So as it stands right now, I think we've got four or five students who are ninth graders that have come in with that group of 18 in the Spanish immersion program, who are going to be going on into AP Spanish next semester. I think the rest of them, if they choose, will be prepared, they'll be ready to go ahead and do it probably next fall or next spring, depending on when we offer that. The Mandarin, Mandarin program right now, they're in Mandarin III, I believe, in the spring, it will become, it's a Mandarin III, IV for those who want to remain in it. We have fewer of those, but, you know, based on conversations we've been having, we expect those numbers to go up. It's, it's pretty incredible. I mean, to sit in that class, I joked with the students in there today that, I don't know why, but for some reason, I expected to walk into a Mandarin I class and feel like, oh, I can kind of see what they're talking about. I had no clue what they were talking about. It was, and it was the students up there, like you said, there's a lot of oral presentation. They were standing up, giving a presentation about the weather in a country of their choice. And the teacher was filming it. And then the students would ask questions. I mean, they were conversing entirely in Mandarin in class today. And the one time I heard a student say something in English, the teacher said in Chinese. And she went, "Oh, sorry." And then she went right back to speaking Chinese. So it, so far, it seems to be just a really incredible program. I'm glad that we've been able to continue to offer something. So thanks to everybody who's helped make that happen, including the board, because I think they're just going to continue to impress us. And the more students we can get in there, the better I think it'll be for all of us.
Thank you.
I would remind the board that next month, you'll have a proposal as relates to Porter's Neck and expansion of our immersion program to there. This is a skill we can give our kids, and it's a skill we can give all of our kids. One of the things I'm proud of is by moving it to Gregory, what we did for the diversity of that program and the ability to expand it to more kids. And Leanne's been there since day one, since we moved it over there. She's done an amazing job. Thank you.
All right. I have been asked to take a short break, since we have run rather a lengthy meeting so far. So we will take another five-minute break.